All right, next slide, please. So you'll notice some workers here in the month of July out on the Minette Bridge, and there'll be pressure washing, pressure washing and for vegetation control. And it's mainly prep to do a repaint of the sidewalk barriers. And again, you'll see this work happening in July. Next slide, please, Dave. All right, this, this is just a, since we are all very excited about this project and chronicling events as they happen, and you'll see up here, this is just the latest stage, removing damaged plexiglass windows and, you know, so just that type of work is ongoing here, a skim coat will be added here soon and just making prep for the muralists to come in. Just see that's some, you can see the work going on right there. Lower right hand. All right. Thank you, Dave. Washington Avenue, just keeping you up to date as that's one of, will be one of the more, more impactful projects downtown. There'll be some detriment while we're under construction, but then the impacts we anticipate will be beneficial to our community when we're finished. So as you can see, starting July 8th, for about a three, four week duration during the daytime hours of 8:30 and 2:30, the northbound lane from Washington Avenue between 6 and Minette will be closed, so it'll be some detours, look for detour signs during that time period. And this was all designed to expedite this project, so there's going to be some impacts, but the idea is to get this work done as quickly as possible and get, return the street back to our citizens so they can enjoy it. Local access will be still available. Next slide. I wanted to provide you an update, 1241 Eighth Street, you've all been receiving, you've updates from the city. This is a long process to get to a point where we demo a house. And so this is one, as you'll recall, you approved us to go into court. So we've been to, obviously been through the court process, receiver was assigned, determined that demolition was the best, best use of this property, and here we are. So this is a, this has been a problem for that neighborhood for about six years. And I will say, I am happy to be here today and have this problems fixed. So just some slides, there's, there's tons of debris that came out of there. And again, it's just, I'm happy to be here today. We have more that we are going to be presenting to you, more we'll ask for approval from, and more we'll be providing updates on from past approvals we received from you. So a lot will be happening in the near future. Next slide. So this, you know, MXPX was in town recently. And, you know, I'm, I'm always kind of happy to share when I, when we have a city employees, you know, part of our, our community who step up and do things that you didn't know that they actually had the skill level to do, or they, they were, had passion about it. So this is Sean Bedrosian, a city electrician, also happened to be, has, to be in a band called the Fibs. So Sean received a call that a front band for MXPX, you know, that they weren't going to show, and they needed a fill-in with about two hours' notice. So their band, they stepped up, and from what I'm hearing, they did a great job. So again, this was a big show at the Admiral Theater. And Sean and his group, they, they stepped up. So Sean's a 15-year employee, and in his, in part-time, he, he, you know, fronts for the MXPX. All right, next slide. And I just want to wish you a happy Fourth of July holiday. Hope you get a chance to be with family and friends and enjoy. And before I, I close tonight, I thought it was important, I want to just talk a little bit about Roosevelt Smith. And so many people already know, but it's a recent passing, and it's, and I just want to share some remarks with you. So I'd like to share a few remarks this evening about Roosevelt Smith, who recently passed away. "Our community mourns the loss of a truly remarkable individual and public servant. I knew Roosevelt from his work in the community, and I valued his input on the city's Arts Commission, which I appointed to in 2020. Roosevelt's passing is a great loss for our community. He was an inspirational leader that displayed immense character and integrity, and his legacy will live on in his contributions he made to making a better community. His commitment to chronicling Kitsap's black history and pioneers, the issues he championed, his devotion to the arts, his passion for helping others, and the lives inspired will be remembered. He earned the respect and admiration of all who had the privilege of working alongside him. To his families and loved ones, we extend our deepest condolences, and I thank him for his service and unwavering dedication to our city. He will be dearly missed, but not forgotten." Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. Just a note about the consent agenda, up in the council briefing, we did make a change to the agenda. So we have moved item 7B, which is the contract award to, the contract, let me start over, contract award to Red Side Construction LLC for construction of Kitsap Lake Park renovation project. We moved that up to the consent agenda, just wanted to let you know. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Hoover.
Thank you, President Chamberlain. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, Claims and Check Register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 407-269 through 407-416, and EFT numbers V41125 through V41214, in the grand total amount of $5,133,260.44. Two, check numbers 407-417 through 407-573, and EFT numbers V41215 through V41310, in the grand total amount of $2,267,426.72. Three, regular payroll for pay period ending May 31st, 2024, in the amount of $1,142,739.94. Four, regular payroll payout for pay period ending May 31st, 2024, in the amount of $4,639.20. Five, regular payroll for pay period ending June 15th, 2024, in the amount of $1,074,113.59. Six, regular payroll payout for pay period ending June 15th, 2024, in the amount of Seven, retiree payroll for pay period ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $30,397.40. B, minutes of meeting, June 5th, 2024. C, minutes of study session, June 12th, 2024. D, minutes of study session, June 26th, 2024. E, confirm reappointment of Tony Gruber to the Design Review Board. F, confirm reappointment to George Thomaser to the Design Review Board. G, confirm appointment to Jackie Brickham to the Design Review Board. H, confirm appointment of Christopher Browning to the Planning Commission. I, confirm appointment of Mia Staben to the Planning Commission. J, confirm appointment of Rosalind Medina CPA to the Audit Committee. K, authorization to submit a FEMA grant application for assistance to the firefighter grant. L, professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for design of the Sixth Street Active Transportation Improvement Project. M, contract modification number one with SCJ Alliance for the Construction Management Services for the Washington Avenue and 11th Street Roundabout Project. N, construction contract with Tucci and Sons, Inc. for Anderson Creek Dam Removals Project. O, professional services agreement with Parametrics for Central Bremerton Forest Main Replacement Detailed Design. And addition is 7B, contract award to Red Side Construction LLC for the construction of the Kitsap Lake Park Renovation Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Hoover. Does any member of the public wish to comment on one of the items on the consent agenda? And just housekeeping, if you do want to comment today, either now or any other items, we have a timer system and a light system. So if you've ever been to a red light, you kind of know the system intuitively. Red light means stop, but before we get to red light, there's going to be 30 seconds, that's going to be yellow. When you're on green, you have three minutes. So does any member of the public wish to comment on one of the items on the consent agenda?
I would like to ask the Council to support Haddon Park's redevelopment renovation.
Can I, can I pause you for just a moment? You are welcome to comment shortly, but right now, that item is not on the consent agenda.
Okay.
But we're going to say it out loud, and we'll have you come up and say it.
Okay, I will sit down.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, anybody else?
Hey, everybody, Travis from Bremerton. You guys are about to approve the study for the Sixth Street bike lane, which is great. It's $191,000, I believe, of the $700,000 you guys assigned to that project last year. Excellent, that's about 30% of the money. I'm going to make a little prediction as to what the study is going to, or where we'll end up in December. There's going to be several alternatives, and the alternatives are going to lean one way or another. One way is, and what I think should be the goal, is to make those bike lanes and the sidewalks beside them, because you get that for free, make them safe enough on Sixth Street so that kids can ride their bikes to the four schools that are there. The Public Elementary School, the Catholic Elementary School, the School of Dance, the, the preschool, right? Make that truly a safe street. And that requires just a couple of things, modern bike lane design, including protection, and no-turn pockets. There's another view that also wants a bike lane, that doesn't want to see kids get hurt, but puts above those goals, the fast free-flowing of cars. And these are, these are ideas that originated in, in Germany with the Autobahn, right? Where they get big wide lanes, big curved, big banked curves, so that cars can keep going fast, don't have to slow down. And that's the, the option that I'm certain that one of the alternatives will include that. And I'm going to urge you all to take a hard look at, and really consider within, what kind of city you guys want to live in? Who are we building this for? Are, are we a kind of city that's going to allow 2% or 3% or 4% of the streets in the city to truly be safe for people who are outside of cars, while all the rest of the streets can be speedways? And they are. And I'll make a further prediction, that it's going to come down to you seven sitting up there at City Council, we're going to have to make the decision. We'll come and express our opinion, there'll be a preferred alternative that may be the other direction, and in the end, City Council decides what the city spends money on. And I'm going to urge you guys to make the streets and make the city a little bit safer for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on one of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing that, I'll go to Council for a motion. Jane? I'm sorry, Council Rebelowski?
Move to approve the consent agenda for July 3rd, 2024.
Counsel, good now.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so let's vote on the consent agenda. Councilmember Coughlin?
Yes.
Rebelowski?
Yes.
Goodmal?
Yes.
Mochler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain? Oh, good, there was Council Younger, yes, okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we will move on to public recognition. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the Council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, such as item 7A regarding Lulu Haddon Park. And so we also are not accepting any comments by Zoom unless we have any accommodations, no accommodations tonight for that. There is a mechanism for you to do that, but it does require you to contact Clerk Hoover 24 hours before the meeting. This is also a reminder that it is election season again, and so please refrain from any endorsements or comments about candidates or ballot measures. We only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We got a pro up there that knows the system, and I already mentioned what the system was, the green light, yellow light, red light. We also ask that you state your name for public record. With that, I'll open up public recognition.
Hello, good evening, I'm Mary Lou Long, longtime resident of Bremerton and ready to celebrate the Fourth of July. It actually was originally the 2nd of July when the declaration was made, but the Fourth is what we celebrate. June 14th was Flag Day, and the Council was not in session on that day. And I don't know if there was any recognition of Flag Day, I'm very much a pro-flag person. As you well know, and now we're about to celebrate the Fourth of July and the birthday of our nation. Since June 14th, 1777, the US flag has been revered as a symbol of the American Republic. Generations of Americans have agreed that it should be proudly or properly respected and proudly displayed. All I ask of the Council today is to stand with me and respect the flag and what it stands for. And with that, if anyone would like to stand, I'm going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I do believe that that states all the values that millennia of people, or many, many people have held sacred for, for our country and for the world. What was I going to say here? Anyway, I won't even look at the paper anymore. I wanted to hope that you all have a very nice Fourth of July, and you get together with your families, blow off some fireworks, but when you're doing that, I hope you also remember what it really is about. And it is about the establishment of a republic, of free people outside of the control of a king or a tyrant. And we try to celebrate that every year, and I recognize that you don't want to say the Pledge of Allegiance, you have not stood for the Pledge of Allegiance ever since I have come here to, to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm not asking you to say anything, but you could stand in respect, but you don't. So anyway, I hope that one day you will really understand the value of saying the Pledge of Allegiance, honoring our flag, and knowing where we came from and where we're going as a country. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Spencer?
President Chamberlain, I just wanted to point out and say thank you to all of you for appointing the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board candidates. And I just wanted to share that two of them are here in the room tonight, and it would be a good chance to acknowledge their appointment, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Spencer. And so I'd love to invite Mia Staben and Chris Browning up to introduce yourselves. They're our new appointees for the Planning Commission. And let's hold off on the timer for this, of course. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia Staben, and I am going to be the new member of the Planning Commission. I just want to say I'm really excited to be joining the Planning Commission and looking forward to lots of learning and growth. So thank you so much for having me tonight, appreciate it. Thank you for signing up to serve our city.
Hey, my name is Chris Browning. I'm very happy to be appointed to the Planning Commission. I love Bremerton, it's a great place. I was stationed here in the Navy, and I work for Kitsap Transit currently. I also ride my bike to work, so that is a fun fact. Yeah, I'm just really stoked to be on the Planning Commission, and I'm proud to serve my city. Thank you.
Thank you also for stepping up, Mr. Browning. Oh, do we have another?
And one more for the Design Review Board, this is Jackie Brickham.
Hello, I'll just keep it short and sweet, I'm very excited to be here and to serve the community of Bremerton, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Brickham. So we're continuing public recognition.
I would like to now make my comment about, oh, Jesse Adams.
Are you commenting about Lulu Haddon?
It is now the time.
It is almost the time, but it is not yet. You're so close, it's okay. I, yes, you know what, this is not, this is a learning curve, you know, doing this. Yeah. I remember the first time I came to public comment, and I actually came and I was introducing myself as the new Arts Commissioner, and it was so nerve-wracking being in front of folks, and then I sat down and, and the lady turned around and she said, you know, we really wanted to know what your qualifications were. I thought, oh my gosh, is this what it's going to be like coming to council meetings all the time? But thank you for being here. So this is a time to talk about anything that's no longer, that's not on the agenda yet. Any items of concern in your city, any other issues or celebrations that might be happening, such as barbecues or anything of that matter that anybody wants to talk about?
Bring the spirit so much up, but I have something else that, that I need to address. Adrian Wright, District 2, Bremerton, Public Safety. With respect to former Counselor Dennehy, who was, talked a lot about the grants pass issue and, and the homeless. I made a comment, and it's come full circle, and just want to bring it to people's attention regarding the current SCOTUS rolling 6-3 in favor of cities and empowering cities. Just a general reminder that you are agents of your constituents, not just nonprofits, public safety is job one, and that if, if people are endangering the public on right of ways, or invading, or damaging public or private land, I'm actually really insisting that we enforce more trespassing laws. Review, and I asked the Council to review and create ordinance that would strengthen and protect public and private property. Look more to arresting of drug dealers, reward law enforcement to move encampments and find repeat offenders. And in addition, to listen in, in depth to first responders, as they know a lot more of what major players are going on, whether through their or public video, personal street contacting and interactions, and their police and fire medical reports. This is a county-wide issue, I know it, not to talk about election issues as, but I know that one person, I would think in particular, has a...
If you're about to advocate for a candidate, we cannot allow that in this space. Okay, thank you, sir.
But it, it is county-wide, it's definitely a Bremerton issue, it has not gone away, it's, it's been fixed, you know, bless the Salvation Army.
30 seconds?
For what they do. I do remember that a lot of people were hurt last year. It's, it's not just about people and the homeless not, not having shelter, it's still the fentanyl deal, it's still about mental illness, but even more, it's about residents, taxpayers that have enormous...
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Renard Cole, I'm from Bremerton, a resident of the city of Bremerton. And I'd like to present to the city a back-to-school block party for the kids. If it's possible for the city to help me with this sponsorship, I have been a sponsor for KCR, Kids Side Credit Union, and more. So I come here today and ask, will y'all be able to help me with the children give back? With the, the supply to all school, elementary, high school, and even college. So I got a rough draft, but it's Bremerton, Baltimore, here, they have a barbecue stand for, so it's a free meal, two-day event. So, thank y'all, I'd like to bring that to y'all's attention.
Thank you. You, so, and you also have flyers in the back, right? So yeah, we, I met Mr. Cole earlier, so I might have had a clue there was a barbecue when else it wasn't coming. Bless who doesn't love barbecue, and there's a cook-off. Okay, I'm sorry, this is public comment, I don't need to add, and it's, I think we're sold on free food, that's what we're sold on. There are flyers in the back that... Does any other member of the public wish to comment during this public recognition period? Okay, let's see, since there's no other public recognition, I'll go ahead and close public recognition and move on to the next item, to public hearing.
Public hearing, 6A.
Not yet.
Public hearing on ordinance number 5494 to amend Bremerton Municipal Code Title 20.46.09, you know, temporary encampment permit. Presenter is Planning Commission, or sorry, Planning Manager Garrett Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I am here to bring forward some potential zoning code amendments. Just a quick summary of those amendments, the Bremerton Housing Authority was the applicant for these zoning code amendments, so that's maybe a little different for you, to have somebody besides staff presenting an application. The Bremerton Housing Authority believes that these amendments will add an option to the continuum of care for finding lasting solutions to homelessness in the city. And they also believe these amendments will provide fiscal security for investments in future potential projects. Just a brief summary of what's proposed, is an opportunity to add a three-year provision to the temporary encampment permit, and also a reduction in minimum lot size. The Planning Commission unanimously recommends adoption of temporary encampment permit amendments, and that the City Council should hold an open record public hearing, consider testimony, and adopt the proposed code changes. Just a brief overview of the process that brought us here tonight. The application for these text amendments was made in March of 2024. The Planning Commission held a public workshop in April, and then a public hearing in May. Study session was last week, and bring us to the public hearing tonight, just before potential adoption. For a brief jurisdictional review, we require, excuse me, per the state RCW 3521915, we are required to allow temporary encampments hosted by religious organizations. The city is actually a little bit more liberal than that, and allows us to extend to some private organizations also. City regulations per the state are limited to protecting public health and safety, and religious organizations are exempt from some criteria that might be imposed by cities, such as excessive insurance, excessive fees, et cetera. Regionally, we plan with the Kitsap Coordinating, Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, and we are governed by county-wide planning policies that all jurisdictions... and we are governed by countywide planning policies that all jurisdictions in Kitsap County must abide by. And one of those countywide planning policies requires that the city accommodate people experiencing homelessness with uh housing, diverse housing opportunities. Um, our own comprehensive plan has provisions for supporting those countywide planning policies and additionally specific policies to provide housing options such as emergency group housing, homeless shelters uh and other uh emergency housing options. So we have an existing code section. BMC twenty forty-six oh nine oh um with an existing one hundred and eighty day three permit. So any, any uh property within the city can potentially host a temporary encampment that is limited to a hundred and eighty-three days and that and the rest of the code is not subject to change uh with the proposal this evening. Um, so this is the existing code that would apply to the three year option, but there's an existing one hundred and eighty-three day option that will remain. Uh, that being said, uh, there are some provisions that will stay in place. There is outreach to police, fire, school, childcare and the health district that's required with any potential permit. Um, there's a required neighborhood meeting where notification is mailed to uh to residents within five hundred feet of the property. Uh, that the permit applicant agree to inspections from police, fire, building and the health district. Plans must be submitted for security, sanitation, trash, setbacks and screening. And each site would need to establish a code of conduct uh for eligibility for residents, which included no illegal drugs, violence, excessive noise and other, other criteria. Um, if these items aren't followed, then the, the permit can potentially be revoked. Once again, this is the existing code and not proposed for change. So the proposed amendment uh is up on the screen now in its entirety uh in the revised code language. And it's a proposed temporary encampment may be allowed as a type three conditional use permit for a period of three years if the following additional approval criteria are met. The first criteria is that site is located within the district center core, general commercial, freeway corridor, industrial zone or Puget Sound Industrial Center. Uh, this is a larger map of Bremerton, which illustrates all of the zones in black that this would be applicable to. Uh, you can see that they're located throughout the city. Um, here is an uh zoomed in version of East Bremerton along the three oh three corridor on Wheaton Way. And here you'll see uh the image of West Bremerton um illustrating sites where this would be permitted. Um, and, excuse me. Uh, moving on to the next criteria that social services are provided such as access to healthcare, counseling, substance abuse, treatment and other job training programs. Um, you'll see the image on the screen here representing that housing continuum espoused by the Bremerton, uh, Bremerton Housing Authority and uh their supporters. Um, which shows how the Bremerton Housing Authority uh intends on finding permanent housing um uh that starts from more modest housing, modest temporary emergency housing that leads to later permanent housing um along the way. So onsite temporary shelter shall be composed of rigid durable materials. Uh, you'll see some examples of that up on the screen, one of those being an example that's a pallet shelter and another being an example from the Low Income Housing Institute. These structures are proposed to stay in place for three years or potentially more. And so to fit in with the neighborhood and also help with sanitary conditions. Um, it's proposed that these structures instead be made of some sort of rigid or durable material. Um, all criteria for BMC twenty-six oh nine oh are met, except that parcel size limitations um may be reduced to no less than half an acre. Uh, we had a request from the Bremerton Housing Authority that our minimum lot size of one acre be reduced to half an acre as they ran an analysis and believe that they would be able to make a site work with uh with that reduced size. And lastly, applications for a three year extension may be applied for after the first two years of an active permit approval are complete. Applications for extensions must be received six months prior to permit expiration, but only one extension approved at a time. So this is the idea that you can have a three year permit and then get it extended for another three year period. Um, but so that you were not providing consecutive approvals, all with one decision that they spaced that timeout. That being said, all approvals would be subject to a hearings examiner. We have the webpage screenshot of that up on the screen now, including the link uh where you can find more information out on our, our webpage. And the hearings examiner essentially acts as a judge. Um, it's an independent arbitrator that decides decisions for the city. So city staff would not be making this decision. It would be handed over to the hearings examiner and that provides both the public and the applicant a more clear process that is more un, potentially unbiased. Uh, where you're having an independent arbitrator make this decision because there can be a lot of emotions on either side of this, whether it's the applicant or members of the public. So it's good to have an independent arbitrator that would end up making these decisions instead. Uh, staff has added some clarifying language um in order to be in line with uh state law references. Um, as you can see here, and we presented it last week's study session. Uh, in the intent, we reference the RCW and that it would supersede our local code. Uh, and then additionally, um, on limits of encampments later in that section, uh, no more than one encampment shall be allowed in the city at one time or is otherwise allowed per the RCW. Uh, the RCW does allow for any religious institution to have a temporary encampment. So we wanted to make that clear in our code and that's why this uh reference language was added. And just to reiterate, the planning commission unanimously recommends that adoption of temporary encampment amendments, excuse me, recommends the adoption of temporary encampment amendments and the council should hold an open record public hearing, consider testimony and uh adopt the proposed code changes. Um, I am available for any questions and uh executive director of the Bremerton Housing Authority Jill Stanton is also in the audience tonight. If you have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Now, the purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment. And right now I'm going to gavel the meeting open for public comment only. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Sounds like a very noble, I marry Lula. It sounds like a very noble endeavor to do this. The, the format seems to have already been laid out for a specific usage by a specific party in a way. And it sounds to me like it's limiting um the ability to do this to a small group of people. Um, or just one or two organizations. Uh, and, and their criteria are so rigid. I really don't know if it's going to be appealing to very many people to want to do that. I hope it would be successful, but what are the percentages of people that are really homeless that are in that position because of just being down on their luck? Versus people that are drug addicted or alcohol addicted and just need to be in an institution for a while? Just recently, the the Supreme Court um made a judgment that cities can uh impose no camping on their streets. Well, that overrided the Ninth Circuit uh court that is very liberal, which I said when this was a, a subject matter that the city was studying. Um, was going to be the end result. It hadn't gone to the Supreme Court yet. Now it has, and they've judged on that. So there shouldn't be any encampments on the city streets at all, as far as I'm concerned. And people that are showing signs of being addled with drugs should be picked up and brought to somewhere where they can get off the drugs. Jail? Being criminally charged, but cleaned up. A hospital situation, an institution that specifically takes care of this. But something because, you know, even if you hit a dog in the street, you pick him up and take him to the veterinarian. These people are obviously looking like they're hurt. And I have people on my street that, not right on my street, but in my neighborhood that look like they're dealing drugs. And they've been doing this for a while and nothing has been done about it. And it's like the police chief said, well, we can't take a videotape recording of actions like a drug transaction or people shooting up drugs and use it against them. We have to be right there. How are you going to do that unless you have undercover agents or you have people that are having cameras that can trigger the cops to come out immediately? Anyway, thank you.
Thirty seconds. Thank you. And just to make sure we're clear about the purpose of the public hearing, I just want to remind people this is about specifically the temporary encampment permit to change the Bremerton code. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Hi, Naomi Levine, Bremerton resident. I, I think it's a good thing. I think any attempt to increase housing um is going to be a noble effort and not just a noble effort, but a humane effort. Currently our circumstances are very inhumane and it's really hard to be homeless and try to change your circumstances. I think some of my question about the changing of the policy is if we make the encampments, do they have an address? Whenever the encampment is there, because something that can make it really hard. Um, I had a friend who dealt with this for a really long time. Um, was that when you're unhoused, you don't have an address, which means that you can't access the job, which is you can't access a lot of resources, you can't apply for insurance, you can't get to medical facilities. A lot of places won't see you. And so I, I guess that's just my curiosity of like the logistics of like, once a place is established, is there an address that people can refer to when they want to apply for services or jobs or a library card or anything like that? Um, so that's, that's just my follow up question. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask them or if I just have to ask you, but outlawed question.
Very briefly, uh, Adrian, District Two. Appreciate uh Jane Robulowski's uh meeting a couple of months ago um with Saint Vincent de Paul and, and all the other services. I, I was inspired. I think that uh noble efforts. I think in, in terms of the line, uh, it was it's the same thing that, that we noticed uh there. I'm sure a lot of you have, have seen the same thing. It's the intervention uh continuum that I hope uh to go over. I think there's more uh need to access uh more, more land or, or different uh sponsors that can uh provide land to this rather than just, just a few select people. But I think it just, if, if there's a, just one word to, uh, to, to go over, it's just a kind of accountability. How, who, when, how, and all that type of stuff is something to definitely go over in, in private session. But thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alden Bradford. I just want to say one of the things I really love about Bremerton is how everybody here is really concerned about safety and keeping everyone in our community safe. I don't think there's anybody in our community I can think of is more vulnerable than our unhoused neighbors. And I'm glad that we're taking some steps to try and keep them safe.
Hello, my name is Hannah. I am a resident of Bremerton on unincorporated land. And I am currently, I currently work in youth and young adult uh homelessness services um across the state. And I would like to um submit my vote for support of this amendment as I know uh housing programs like rapid rehousing tend to take a lot of time. Um, and so that three year extension allows uh that time for that application process for folks. So I appreciate the intention um and am a huge advocate for housing first, and I feel like this would satisfy that. Not a huge fan of the restrictions, but I know that we are sometimes um shackled by HUD restrictions with that. So thank you for your time and full support.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to comment during this public hearing?
I'm Jesse and I'd just like to say I really support this idea and nothing about a park.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no more comments, going once, going twice. I close the public hearing and will now go to the council for a motion, Vice President Muckler. Oh, maybe I, we might have arranged this ahead of time.
Move. Yes. We have arranged this ahead of time. Move to pass ordinance number five, four, nine, four as recommended by the planning commission to amend Bremerton Municipal Code Title twenty point four-six point zero-nine-zero temporary encampment permit.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second and we are open for discussion. Vice President Muckler can lead us off.
This is a real triumph of perseverance. Thank you all. Um, in, in government terms, this was done in a New York heartbeat. So thank you and I look forward to seeing this permit, this zoning change, this ordinance change, there we go, uh, be used.
Counselor Kaufman?
Well, thank you, Council President. Uh, I just want to first thank the members of the planning commission for the time spent on, on going over this and then doing a thorough job. Um, thank you to Department of Community Development for, again, the speedy process on bringing this to us and a very clear presentation. And thank you to the Bremerton Housing Authority for, for bringing this to the city and being a great partner. I, I kind of want to stress that this is adding a tool in our toolbox um to do our part as, as a city and a community. And I've said many times up here before, we, we can't do it alone. Bremerton can't do it alone. We need county and state coordination with the other cities. But this is a tool uh that can result in less impact to our, to our neighborhood areas. Uh, right now we allow large concrete shelters that's existing in the code. Um, and those are not ideal for the folks who need uh, who need that housing desperately and who need resources. And it's, and it's not ideal for the neighborhoods nearby. Uh, but adding this tool to our toolbox is an option for a smaller shelter with onsite services that can better serve those folks in need and have less of an impact nearby. So uh, to me, this sounds like a, um, this is a really, really great option. And again, thanks again to folks who brought this to us and uh look forward to it being used.
Counselor Robulowski?
Yeah, I have a, a question for Mr. Jackson. Brief. So I just want to clarify, if, if someone gets a permit and it's good for three years and by year two and a half, they need to reapply to extend it another three years, is six years the limit? Or if it's working well in the neighborhood and the need is still there, which most likely will, can it go on for nine and twelve and plus years?
So they would need to keep reapplying in three year increments.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Um, thank you. So one thing I want to make sure that um that never happens again is the encampments that we had down on Broadway and MLK and Eighth Street. It was very impactful to the neighborhood and um and to the people who were living and dying there. There were quite a few deaths last year. Um, at least this type of situation where they're not in a tent, they're actually in a, a space that it's their own bed, they don't have to roll up a bed every morning and roll one out every night. They can keep some, some things. I think that helps people just be alive and, you know, have a decent life. So I'm really So I'm really glad that our community partners are working hard on this. And I guess I heard a couple of people concerned that only certain groups are being allowed to do it. And what it is, is one group has come and said they want to do it. And so if in the future there's 10 private groups, then we could look at our codes to see if that was needed. But right now there's only one who is asked to help our homeless neighbors. So, thank you.
Um, let's see. Yeah. Counselor Goodnow.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for bringing this forward and thanks for, DCD for getting it through so fast. You know, basically really quick and maybe simple talk is we created something to allow organizations to allow folks to camp on their property. And, um, you know, we looked at lots of data and I think we were thinking, you know, tents. So tents are much more movable. So this is going to allow something like pallet shelters. So a little more permanent, also more expensive to be moving around. So it's just great that the agency came to us to tweak this because they're the folks sort of boots on the ground that are doing this. And occasionally the process works and government can get some done quickly. So that's all I, thanks.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and take around Vice President Mokler. You started us off, right? Okay.
Counselperson Younger has his.
Oh, Counselor Younger, please go right ahead.
Thank you. My question's for Garrett. I didn't see this in your presentation. And by the way, I'm under the weather, so I'm a little hazy. I apologize. Garrett, does the Kitsap County and the other cities have similar ordinances on the books that allow temporary shelters of six months extend to three? Are we the first to do this?
Uh, to my knowledge, we'd be the most permissive city in the state allowing for a three-year permit. Some allow for six with a, with an update, roll over to an additional six, some allow for one year. The city of Bremerton, I believe, would be the most permissive in the state with a three-year permit.
Okay. And you must be in tune with other planners or perhaps Director Spencer might be in tune. Any idea whether the other municipalities or Kitsap County intend to expand their ordinance to be similar to ours?
We don't know of anything like that, no.
Okay. I'm in, I'm in support of this, but I think we can all see the problem if, if the city is the most conducive to all these homeless shelters and there, there can't be shelters of six months or more in duration in unincorporated Kitsap County or the other cities. We're going to have a concentration of these shelters in our city. So I think it'd behooves us to do outreach with the other cities in the county to make sure their ordinances also reflect these obviously needed changes in order to provide these shelters. I totally understand the need to do so. To, to put that kind of infrastructure and then only be able to be open for six months is that, that's not realistic. So I support this, but we need to do the next step, which is to have outreach with other communities and see if they will also expand their ordinances to have something similar on the books.
Counselor Younger, Director Spencer, I believe is up to, to reply to you.
So President Chamberlain, thank you for this opportunity to be here. I just want to add, I just received information that apparently Kitsap County is going to be working on some code changes to mirror what we have done. So they're in progress to change their code.
Thank you, Director Spencer. Counselor Younger, do you still have the floor?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, and so I just have a couple of questions and I really should have asked them at the study session, but I think I wasn't processing a couple of just key details until earlier this week and I wanted some clarification on them. So we have, um, I want to talk about specifically the only rigid, it was IIC and it was one of the highlighted components that you gave in your presentation. Only rigid sturdy materials. So does that exclude fabric tents?
It would.
Okay. And so tents would not be allowed on these sites for, do we have any kind of provisions to allow for a temporary encampment with non-sturdy materials?
We do. The, the existing 183-day permit would not be affected by this and it would not carry that requirement.
Okay. So for instance, if we had a, uh, if we had a service organization that wanted to apply for that sort of permit, then they could do that in addition to the, and, and my understanding is it's one service. We, we only allow one permit of this type that we are, that you're proposing, correct? Only one service organization can, can have a permit at a time for this specific temporary encampment code change?
Correct, but if you're a religious organization, that doesn't carry that limit.
So, okay, so non-religious organizations, service organizations. So somebody could apply for a temporary tent encampment permit. And at the same time, while a structure, you know, pallet shelter, for instance, hybrid shelter model was being built for just, I'm just saying, both of those could happen in perpetuity or in conjunction with each other, like in, at the same time.
If it was, um, well, if it's a private organization, you'd have one temporary encampment in place in the city at a time. So that's, that's what.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I think, thank you for that clarification. I think you know, I think you were smelling what I was cooking. So thank you for that clarification. Um, and once we pass this, it's something that's allowed immediately, but we already have kind of a permit in place. So I don't see that if another organization were to step up that you would expedite theirs unless there's a hitch in, in the plan. So we already have one in the works now, correct?
Uh, we don't have a permit submitted at this time.
Okay, but, okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. That's all the questions that I have. I'm going to turn it back to Vice President Mokler. You have some questions? Thank you.
Just, um, actually your question, Council President, opened up. Mr. Jackson, I was wondering if you could just explain the ordinance that City of Bremerton has that allows religious organizations specifically to host tent encampments?
Sure. As explained in the presentation, the state R C W doesn't allow for jurisdictions to restrict religious organizations. So we're creatures of the state. Therefore, religious organizations have no limit in the city either.
Okay. And the other thing I just wanted to do is to say again, my fellow counselors shame me by the specificity of their gratitude. I wanted to thank very much BHA, KCR, uh, hang on, DCD. And if all the other community partners and city staff involved in this. This has been a really flat out boogie since the middle of January, when the hybrid shelter concept was approved. So this is really a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions, comments? Counselor, uh, Counselor Coughlin.
Thank you. I think I did just want to say out loud, um, appreciating Councilmember Younger's concerns. That since this is limited to just one site at the moment, then only one site for a non-religious organization. And so if, if ever there was a demand for more and more in Bremerton, then it would have to come back to us for approval for more than one site for non-religious, so.
Counselors? And yeah, so my last words are I am super impressed by the collaboration between administration and our applicant in order to expedite this temporary encampment zoning change. And very appreciative of that for the betterment of the city. I know that it's pretty unprecedented for it to have gone through at this speed. So thank you very much. And seeing no more questions, comments. Let's, let's vote on this, huh? Counselor Member Rebolowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's see, this completes public hearings. Our next item on the agenda is general business 7A, contract award to Nisqually Construction Services LLC for construction of Haddon Park Improvement Project. Presenters are Parks and Recreation Interim Director Hoshel and Park Preservation and Development Manager, Berna.
Good evening, Council, and thank you. As you're aware, we presented to you at the study session last week. We have a small clip that we would like to share with yourself again as a reminder and to the public. But seeking your approval to move forward with the construction of Haddon Park and the improvement project there. So appreciate the consideration and thank you.
Good evening, counselors. So before I get started on the Haddon Park, um, uh, project, I, based on some questions that we had in study session, I wanted to give a brief overview of our parks capital planning project process, excuse me, which consists of updating our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan every six years to stay eligible for state grants and has been developed in-house for the last two rounds. The most recent Parks Recreation Open Space Plan was adopted by City Council in February 2020 after an extensive 18-month public comment period, which included a survey receiving 365 responses. One of the first questions of the survey asked, how important do you think Bremerton's parks and recreation system is to the quality of life in Bremerton? And almost all, 98.9% responded yes, it's important to their quality of life. On the bottom of the screen is the six-year capital facilities plan, which was in this PROS plan adopted with the highest priority projects. First on the list, Warren Avenue Park was completed in 2021. Next up, implementing the Urban Forest Management Plan, and this is really ongoing removal of risk trees in our parks. Third is Kitsap Lake Park, which was on the consent agenda tonight. Next up, Pendergast Regional Park, which we've made progress on by completing 30% construction documents funded by a $50,000 Department of Commerce grant. And finally, Haddon Park Renovation Project, which I'm excited to speak to you now. Next slide. Haddon Park is a four-acre park located in an underserved area, which qualifies for a grant match reduction of 10%. The site was originally used as an informal landfill between 1920 and 1940. And then it was filled to create a flat area for the development of an elementary school and area for recreation, which was constructed and, and named in honor of Lulu DiHaddan, who was a staunch advocate for public education, having never received any herself, and was involved in setting up Olympic College, president of the local chapter of League of Women Boaters, and went on to serve in the Washington House of Representatives and State Senate. In 94, there was a geotechnical study that documented the landfill and then the city purchased the site from the school district in 97 and the park was developed in 98. For 26 years, there have been no capital improvements to the park and it shows. Looking at the photos along the bottom of the slide, no part of the park is ADA accessible. There's no path to the sports court, which is cracked and uneven. The restroom is substandard and inaccessible and poorly located. The drinking fountain picnic tables are again substandard and non-accessible. The playground pictured here was boarded up and unfortunately had to be removed due to safety concerns. But interestingly enough, we found out that it was at least 10 years old before it was even installed in 98 and held in storage by the Navy and donated to the city. So as mentioned, Haddon Park was identified as a high priority in the 2020 PROS plan, which recommended preparing a master plan to guide the renovation, to bring the neighborhood park up to standard, to include accessible parking pathways, new restroom, shelter, none currently exists now, playground, basketball court, site furniture, trees and landscaping. Next slide. Public outreach for this project started back in 2020 prior to applying for grant funding and included a two-page survey with a self-addressed stamp envelope mailed out to 980 households living within a 10-minute walking distance of the park. One of the questions asked response to rank park features and at the top of the list was a new restroom. And many actually, we just, we realized, didn't realize there was a restroom there. They mistook it for a, a storage shed. Second was playground, followed by making best use of available space, reserve the open green space. We have a local church that uses it for free soccer clinics sometimes. Creating a picnic area and covered shelter, improving the park's attractiveness, upgrading the sports court and improving the park's entrance. The master plan was developed with these features and posted at the park with a QR code inviting more public feedback and then approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission prior to applying for four grants. Next slide. So here's a view of the illustrative park master plan showing the extent of the landfill in the southeast corner, which during this phase of the project was more accurately delineated during the cultural resources review. Anytime you get state funding to do a project, you need to do a cultural resource survey. And based on the age of the debris over 50 years and the contents, they were finding jars and bottles and cans. It was listed on their historic registrar. So that has severely delayed the project and impacted the design, requiring regrading and rerouting the utilities. The activity areas, shelter, playground, restroom, basketball court are primarily on the east side of the site and they'll be shown in the following slide rotated to be enlarged, just so you know. But in the lower left-hand corner is a summary of the $1.7 million project costs and consists of a combined total in this slide of $988,000 of grants. However, we just learned yesterday that the grant increase request that we put into the youth athletic facility grant was approved. So that brings the combined total in grants to $1,078,000. So the additional amount needed to complete the project dropped from $327,000 to $237,000. Here's a view, uh, next slide of the engineered site plan below. And then, uh, over later, some inspirational images showing the main features, including the paved accessible parking, renovated sports court, example of the shelter overlooking the lawn area and playground. Example of the new children's playground, which I'll touch on a little bit more later. An example of accessible site furniture next to the playground, park restroom and freestanding drinking fountain with accessible pathways connecting all of the features. Next slide. Lastly, we're excited to invite interested members of the public to attend the August Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. We'll, we'll be reviewing playground equipment options and we'd love your input. Our goal is to have a community build day like we've done for some of our recent playgrounds, Minnet Park pictured here and subsequent ground opening celebration next summer. So with your support, we're excited to be one step closer to making this project a reality, providing new recreational opportunities for the community and rebuilding this park better than before. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
My time has come.
I love it.
Uh, my name's Jesse. I am a resident. I live near the Lu Haddon Park and it really isn't a sad, sorry state of affairs. I sincerely hope you approve this squally bid. It's been a long time coming to even get to this position with the project. So please support the park.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Very long. I've lived in that neighborhood for a very long time. Both of my children attended Lulu Haddon School. That was a long time ago. And then they tore it down and then the park was languishing. Nothing was really done to it. Nobody was caring about it. And the kids really didn't have much of a basketball court, no nets and not lit up. And it was just not a very, um, inviting place. And then all the little kids monkey bars were all taken out and just a dirt pit. Uh, I'm glad to see something is finally happening with it. I would like to have swings in there. My grandchildren are like 12 years old now, but they love the swings and all the kids love swings. So you put some equipment in there. I hope you put some swings in there and not just a few cheap monkey bars. So thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member, member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing that, I'll go to council for a motion. Counselor Coughlin.
Thank you, Council President. I move to award a contract in the amount of $775,237.01, W S S T included, to Nisqually Construction Services LLC for construction of the Haddon Park renovation project and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented and to further authorize a budget adjustment of $237,617 per the attached project budget summary.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So Counselor Coughlin would like to lead us off.
Thank you. I'll just say real quick, thank you to Mr. Houschel and Ms. Berna for a thorough presentation on this, for moving this forward. As we, as we, I think, have well heard, long overdue to get these improvements built at Haddon Park. So really excited to see this move forward and come to fruition. Thank you.
Vice President Mockler.
Thank you, Council President Chamberlain. I would like to ask again one question, which is the landfill which was known and reported in the Kitsap Sun in 97 and 2021, possibly other times in between. You have mentioned several times that the design was altered once, and I agree with you, this is like dark comedy. Once the landfill became a monument of cultural significance. So I understand that that would change how you have to proceed because there are going to be multiple archaeologists looking over your shoulder while you're digging. But I don't fully understand why the design needed to be altered. The landfill is capped with seven feet of uncontaminated soil. And I'm assuming there was no plan to breach that cap in any previous design. Parametrics did not just this design, but the previous one, did it not? Sorry, that's like five questions in one question.
Yeah, I'll try and answer the landfill question. So the 94 geotechnical study did 11 borings, and one of the 11 borings found debris that was contaminated with petroleum seven feet below ground. But the landfill, like the bottles and jars and things are more surfaced than that. So the, once it became documented as on the historic registrar, it required us not to dig deeper than one foot within that area. And the delineation of the landfill was more accurately defined. This go-around with the cultural resources review, and they were looking at it from that perspective. So given that the sports court is within that landfill area, we're actually having to get an exemption for that because of the footings go four feet below ground. So we will have to have a cultural resource consultant there on site based on the state's requirements to document anything that comes out during that excavation. But one of the delays that happened was, or one of the things that happened once it was put on the historic registrar is that the grading of the site had already been done to reflect a equal cut and fill. And we were no longer able to cut more than one foot in that area. And so it altered the grading calculations. It had to be regraded, and the utilities had to be rerouted around the landfill. So that was new information.
I'm sorry, when you say regraded, you mean in the design it had to be?
Yeah, because we were no longer able to go one foot below ground in that area. Yeah.
So that the geotechnical report was complete in May of 2023, was it not?
There were, there were two iterations of it, so I don't have the exact dates, but it was completed during this phase of the project, yes.
Yeah. And, okay, this is my final question because I don't want to hold up Lulu Haddon Park anymore. Our poor Lulu Haddon. Was there some holdup that the design and all of this preparation work could not have been done in 2023?
Well, once it was put on the historic registrar, we had to wait to get the green light to do the geotechnical work that was required to proceed with the construction documents. We needed the geotechnical in order to determine the cut and fill and the structural calculations for the buildings. So we were held up by that.
Yeah, well, I mean, and this is kind of tough on you because I was corresponding with Director Alavato. So, but he assured me that all of that had been completed in May of 2023, that the study had been completed and that the report was in draft.
I don't have the dates exactly in my mind right now, but I can just assure you that we're trying to expedite this project as soon as possible right now.
Yeah, okay. And just adding again, I really look forward to receiving the planting plans for this park. Thank you for all the work you've done and for coming back twice. Appreciate it.
Counselor Rebulowski.
Well, I'm glad this is finally moving forward. Just one comment. You've got a big open field, but the public gardens, which I'm assuming are going to be like pea patches, are underneath big shade trees. I mean, it's depicted that way on your plan, so hopefully when the final landscaping plan with the plant selection is done, we're not shading pea patches.
Yeah, so I could speak to that. The, the area was designated as conceptually as an area for pea patches. It hasn't been fully designed for what it's going to be like. We don't know what the requirements of the public or the expectations of the public are going to be and how many. And so we're going to have to work through that. A water line is going to be brought in for the future expansion of that. So when we get to that step, you know, we'll be able to evaluate that scenario. Yeah. And thank you.
Councilors, any other questions? Counselor Coughlin.
I forgot my thank yous to say great news on the hundred-plus-thousand-dollar grant coming in, so we don't have to pay that out of our general refunds. So that is excellent news. Thank you.
And Counsel Younger, any hand up? Okay, great. And I just want a clarification. It was put under the historical registrar because it was a 100-year-old landfill. Is that why? Or is there, was it already on the registrar before the historical registrar? Very important vintage garbage. I mean, we like it. I go to.
It wasn't on the historic registrar before, but they had a certain, they had different levels of criteria that met the criteria, and one of the criteria was over 50 years.
Over 50 years. And so it was recently put on there, is that?
Yes.
And it wasn't before?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all. I have clarification. I think we are done with our questions and comments, and so let's, let's vote on this contract, huh? Counsel, excuse me, Councilmember Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Rebulowski?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Wonderful. All right. So now we are, we have a lot to celebrate today, a lot of good stuff happening today with motions and actions, and people coming to the meetings and people being appointed. Thank you for sticking around for council reports, which is an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district and announce any events they've received or recently attended or plan to attend or to speak on any other city-related topic. And first up, well, it didn't used to, it hasn't been me this year, but I'm subbing for Counselor Frye. So we have one slide from District Two. And volunteers are needed for the City of Bremerton's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Are you part of an organization or business that organizes an event, provides a venue where it does marketing for tourists from outside Bremerton? Yes, I'm reading it to you. You can read it, but I'm going to read it to you anyway. Do you work for a hotel or operate a vacation rental in Bremerton? Are you available for a three-year term of service, three to five meetings a year with a schedule to be determined and an option to attend in person or remotely by Zoom? So we have a website you can go to, you can go to the city website for boards and commissions. If you'd like to sign up for the LTAC committee. And that concludes District Two's report, subbing in here for Counselor Frye. Next up, we have District Three, Counselor Jeff Coughlin.
All right, thank you, Council President. Before we get going, I just want to say thank you again to folks for stepping up to serve the committee on our commissions, on Design Review Board and Planning Commission. Really glad to have you on board and have that planning commission back at full strength and all seven members. That is fantastic. First slide. It is fireworks July 4th season. I want to say it was a really nice event with Bridge Blast despite the, despite the rain. It was a good turnout. I thought it was really nice to have the downtown boardwalk activated this year with a lot of vendors and people out and about. And as this event goes in the future, the one feedback I've heard is just trying to get more folks to our local Bremerton businesses as well, getting them shopping and eating downtown if they're coming in for it. It's nice to have people in the city, but if they stay here and shop and spend dollars, that is, that is the goal. So I'll keep looking for that for future years. And fireworks in general, it's going to be really hot the next couple of days. I hope folks out there are safe and following the laws. We know not everyone does. My goodness, and it's something we struggle with each year. I hope that the change we made last year to allow ground-based only sale in the city and discharge and getting rid of the high mortars helps. You know, that said, my district downtown, I have heard fireworks every night since Bridge Blast. And so I also look forward to getting a report, kind of the number of calls and incidents to Public Safety Committee for us to review. And I, I really hope that that will include that there's been some enforcement of the laws that we have passed, including some fines for legal discharge outside the third and the fourth. I know it's tough to enforce when things are in chaos, but this, but fireworks going off days and days or weeks before and after the fourth is something that we should be able to, to be enforced. So I really hope that, that the administration is able to do that. Next slide. Just a quick reminder, we got first Friday after the fourth. On the fifth, check out your local businesses downtown, Lebo, Minnet, and Charleston. Come check out some cool artwork and other displays. And then next slide. This was fun. So, so it's been about a month since this event. I think first opportunity I've had to, I was absent one meeting, and then we had Juneteenth. But this was Ride the Tide. And so for 10 years now, there's been an annual sailing. Sometimes started from Tracyton, this year it started from Silverdale, and mostly kayakers and human-powered craft went all the way down to Port Orchard. And the purpose for the event is commemorate that our Department Interior actually designated almost 200 miles of water trails around Bremerton and Kitsap as actual national water trails. And this year was the, was the 10th anniversary of it, so it was a special, special celebration. And just because I was the only official from Bremerton there, we got an award. It's a month late presenting it to us, but this is celebrating the 10-year anniversary of the Kitsap and its little water trails. And there was an award given to the county and to our state, but to Bremerton as well, to recognize Bremerton's partnership in keeping our waterways clean and safe and also accessible to folks to be able to use. So it does light up. I was going to bring a battery pack, so I'll have to plug it in. It probably lights up from below. So we'll have to find a place up in the, up in the office to plug it in and display it. Put it on a shelf, yeah. So bringing that back to the city. And I normally put the more difficult subjects up front, but my last slide, the mayor already touched on it. But I want to say a few words about Roosevelt Smith as well. He, to me, was, was a friend, a mentor, somebody as we encounter difficult subjects on council I'd be able to talk to or would give me advice. And he's a fellow board member at the Kitsap History Museum, and he's going to be sorely missed. For folks who don't know, I mean, quite a life, he was also an Air Force veteran, an antique dealer, mental health counselor, sensitivity trainer, a collector. We had his exhibit, the Black Americana, State of the Union, Black and White up at the museum for over three years. And he got just about a month and a half ago, brought it in. He brought in his entire collection, well, his entire collection, but a good, a good chunk of it, and set it up for just two weeks for some school groups that wanted to see it. Didn't have the chance and just took it down a couple of weeks ago. And he, I mean, he was, he was on, he was on Arts Commission. He did so much for the city, and he's just going to be sorely missed. He was somebody who was always upbeat, even in the most serious and difficult of subjects. He had a really positive viewpoint and kind of always looked for the best path forward and certainly didn't sugarcoat anything, including some of our awful history, must never forget. But he came about it in such a way that was always looking for a path forward and how to make things better. And so I just want to just thank you, Roosevelt, for, for what you've given to our city and our community, and we're going to miss you, buddy. So it was going to be annoying to end it with that one, so pass it back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Coughlin. Next up, we have District Four, Jane Rebulowski.
Thank you. I think I have a few slides in there tonight. Yeah. So we could go through these fairly quickly, Dave. It's the ongoing saga of cars parking in the bike lane all night, every night, into the morning, all weekend. The city staff has come up with another plan to change the signage, but we'll see what happens with that. Council might have to move forward with something else if this doesn't work because it is so unsafe for families. When you have a marked bike lane, a child or a mother with a cargo wagon should be able to safely go through a marked bike lane. This is ridiculous. Okay, Dave, you can finish up with the Washington. Okay, so I'm changing my, my schedule. Usually I have a district meeting on the first Thursday of the month. This one's going to be on the second because I didn't think you wanted to come talk to me on the Fourth of July. So our Financial Service Director, Mike Riley, is going to give us a presentation on the city budget process. And we're changing to a two-year budget with adjustments in between, of course. But I've got a lot of questions, and I hope you all do too. A lot of times people just say, well, why don't you just put a line item in for $40,000 a year to do this or $50,000 to do that? We don't have a lot of discretionary money, but that's something that we need to hear from the public, what your key issues are that you want us to help fund. And then that's the end of my slides, but I did attend a really great event. I don't know how many of you know Doc Blackwell. He does a lot of fundraising for kids in our community. The name of his organization is Doc Loves the Kids. Gives away backpacks, new shoes, haircuts, and does it a couple of times a year. But anyway, they had their fundraiser last Saturday. It was called Briskets and Brews. And it was all the barbecued meat you could eat and all the beer you could drink if you were 21. It did start raining, so I didn't stay really long. But one of our city police officers participated in the grill-off, and he made the most delicious jerk chicken you've ever had. So thank you, Mommy, for participating in that, along with the rest of the community members. So, and one other little thing, at nine o'clock Friday morning, we're going to do a cleanup at Haddon Park that one of the neighbors in my area has organized, so we can clean up the debris. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Anyway. We have a separate thing. But anyway, we're doing a cleanup for all the people who are going to shoot off illegal fireworks. So if you want to come clean up, every park needs cleanup on Friday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is District Five, Counselor Michael Goodnow.
Let's say a couple of quick things. The next Charleston district meeting, they haven't announced it on their social media, but it should be on July 16th, Tuesday, down somewhere on Calo usually at 6:00 PM. And then the next Forest Ridge cleanup will be July 20th. And I would normally announce that at the next meeting, but I think I'm going to be out of, I'm not attending the meeting on the 17th. I also wanted to just plug, and I'll send some more forward for next time, but that Kitsap Pride, the LGBT Pride Celebration will be on July 20th at the Kitsap County Fairgrounds from 2:00 to 9:00 PM. And so I just wanted to get that on people's calendars. Forest Ridge Park cleanup would be earlier, and so you can do both. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have District Six, Vice President Mockler.
Counselor Rebulowski, you're welcome to interrupt me once during my council report. It's the annual, the annual, yeah. Haddon Park and most parks get an Um, Haddon Park and, and most parks get an annual cleanup that's often organized by Parks and Rec. Okay. Um, all right. So this is the District Six Council Report. Next slide, please. I have had a monthly town hall since December 2022 and the next one is coming up on July 8th. The last one that we had was a lot of talk, um, continued the conversation among neighbors about nuisance activities and nuisance properties and what can be done about these. And we then had a subsequent just meeting of community and neighbors sitting around on the grass at Lulu Haddon, like what can we do about this? Um, and that one of the big difficulties is that the noise ordinance is not being enforced or it receives zero citations in 2023. And that is one of the big tools that we have to enforce the chronic nuisance property ordinance, which Councilor Younger, who was on council back in the midst of time when it was created, will tell you is an ordinance that has teeth, but it depends upon citations being issued. So I went to the police and community together meeting and they were very focused on the rule of law. And I just started thinking about both of these things, um, the week of Supreme Court decisions. How necessary it is to the functioning of a representative democracy to be able to trust the institutions to enforce the laws, that the laws are not arbitrary, that they do not depend upon power, that they do not depend upon money, that they do not depend upon personal likes or dislike, that every person is equal before the law. And that when this is not true, we stop trusting our government. And that's, I'm going to quote Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Katie Stanton, there we go. Um, it is very important in a republic that people should respect the laws. For if we throw them to the winds, what becomes of civil government? So that's something that I hope to be achieving in this coming town hall and in future is helping people take their passion for having the law be observed, be enforced, be fair to all people, that the rule of law shall prevail, at least here in Bremerton. Um, is some, it's an ongoing project that we'll be working on, you know, plus information about barbecues and, and cookouts and so forth. I wish I could say that the fireworks ordinance that we crafted last year is being observed to the letter. But I will say that up to about three years ago, large mortars were pouring down on my back metal terrace roof. And now I'm not having metal objects striking my building. So that's better. Um, I hope, hang on. I hope that at some point in future, in a world where technology can like find anybody doing anything anywhere, that it could figure out who is setting off mortars on the hills around me and go to them and scold them for a really, really long time. Yes, that would work. Um, that's about it. Thank you. And thank you to all the people who spoke up in favor of compassion.
Thank you. Next up, we have District Seven, Eric Younger.
Thank you. Uh, first item, congratulations, uh, Councilmember Mokler on Lulu Haddon Park. Finally getting past as far as construction. I know you've been on that for several years. So congratulations again to you. I'd like to thank the administration for that. Uh, Council President Chamberlain, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I tuned in late. I had some technical difficulties, but item seven B got moved up to consent agenda, which was the Kitsap Lake renovation concept plan. So for those folks like me that looked in their packet and said, whoa, she skipped that one. No, it was in consent agenda and that passed unanimously. So just, just to recap, uh, that we're going to get all kinds of great improvements. It's like a big part, including a new accessible fishing dock, new boat lamp, uh, launched a new shelter. Basically the whole thing's going to be redone. So looking forward to that. And of course, uh, the price we'll have to pay besides the contract price is the disruption this summer. So I apologize in advance for that. But we're going to have a great new renovated park and I'd like to thank the administration, uh, including Mayor Wheeler for, um, seeing that project through. So, so excited for that. The other thing is the whole fireworks thing. I just kind of. So in my household, my wife loves the fireworks. My son and I could do without them. Tomorrow night I'll be sitting on my deck, uh, looking over Ostrich Bay. And there will be mortars, I'm certain of it, fireworks over the bay. And I mildly enjoy them, but I understand, especially with all our veterans with PTSD and our dogs, I used to have a cat and I'd lose my cat for a couple of weeks. Um, anyways, what I'm getting at, there's pros and cons. I definitely can understand people wanting to view their rights to light off fireworks and, um, I'm not sure the ordinance will be effective. In fact, I don't think, to be honest. So years ago, I think we've had two votes in the city and it's probably been 10, 15 years now. I think it's time for it to go to the vote of the people. Council should put it on a ballot and let the people have their say. And we'll do that again if it doesn't pass 15 years again, perhaps. But I think that we've had enough people write letters in with their concerns. Uh, we've had a lot more Gulf War era veterans with concerns. So a lot more animal rights people. And again, in my household, it'll probably be well, one for and two against. And, uh, I could really go either way. But I think people need to decide. It's too tough. I know Port Orchard is, is considering it. And I'd like us to consider putting on the ballot for our constituents and letting them decide by majority vote. So hopefully we can bring that up at a study session. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, you, Kama, Council President, our last, that's me. So hi. Uh, welcome to our new planning commissioners and design review board. Okay, she has one. Um, I also wanted to, uh, thank Jill Stanton and Tony Ives who have, uh, oh, Ms. Brooklyn's right there. Thank you very much for your service. Hello. Um, but I wanted to thank our, um, our, our housing partners, um, housing resource partners who are pushing forward on a, um, this shelter plan on a hybrid shelter. It's going to be innovative. It's going to be amazing. Um, and, uh, I have full confidence in them to deliver a creative project, product to us that's going to meet the needs, um, in, in a diverse way of our houseless community. Uh, I don't think that I'm alone when I say that this council is, um, that's our priority is to support our, uh, houseless neighbors. And, um, so until you elect other folks up here, I think you have some pretty strong advocates, um, who are vulnerable folks in our community. Um, and mayor, you may not know this, but Sean Bedrosian also moonlights, um, along with his wife as my oldest, uh, godparents. So yeah, it's a small town, you know, small town. Um, so we've known them that long. My oldest is 24. So good man. He's a good man. Um, and I just wanted to, uh, just wish everybody, uh, a safe and happy and festive Fourth of July. Take good care of each other. If anybody is even out there listening now, um, I just want to encourage you just have open communication with your neighbors. If you're having any issues with noise or fireworks or, um, you know, you have problems with your pets that are running away, uh, go, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt and go talk to your neighbors ahead of time and see if you can work something out with them. And at the very least, uh, you guys can continue to look out for each other and build stronger relationships. And with that, I'm going to give you our closing statement because we're about to head into some executive sessions. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read you this part, but I'm not going to adjourn the meeting as the, uh, script says to. Uh, the next study session will be held on the sixth floor at Council Conference Room, um, next Wednesday, July 10th, beginning at 5:00 PM with a remote option available via Zoom. Uh, so we are, um, meeting in an exempt closed session, uh, uh, to review labor negotiations pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 14 4B. Did I flip the order? Let me start over. So our first, um, executive sessions, let me see, let me, let me go back to this. Uh, is a 10 minute, uh, executive session to discuss agency enforcement actions allowed under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1I with no action anticipated, followed by the five minutes to discuss potential litigation as allowed under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, uh, 1I and action is anticipated. We'll come back. We'll take action. We'll adjourn the meeting. We'll go into the last executive session. Is that correct? The exempt session. Thank you so much for correcting me on that. Okay. And if you don't want to stick around for all of that, uh, we'll see you next week. Otherwise we'll see you when we come back for action. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
...
How many more minutes till we, I don't even know why I need the mic? Oh, are we live now?
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I call us back to order. The city attorney will summarize an action before council and we'll read a motion for the record.
Assistant City Attorney do that.
Oh, the assistant city attorney.
Good name. This is in regards to the city abating nuisance properties in the city and so the motion is move to authorize the city attorney's office to pursue any necessary legal action to abate nuisance and code violations, collect fines imposed for nuisance and code violations, and collect any fees and costs associated with the abatement of nuisances and code violations at 1601 Fourth Street, 1110 Rainier Avenue, and 2416 11th Street in Bremerton, Washington.
Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, none online, right? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go to council for a motion. We can go so moved.
So moved.
And?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Councilmember Mochler.
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, this is, I read this prematurely. I'm gonna go ahead and read it again. Immediately following adjournment of tonight's meeting, the council will meet in an exempt close session to discuss or review labor negotiations pursuant to RCW 42 dot dot three zero dot one four oh four B.